So we're calling to order the Village of Lake Bluff's Joint Land Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for Wednesday, September 20th, and for the roll call. Member Danley.
Here.
Member Fisher.
Here.
Member Miller.
Here.
Member Russell.
Here.
Member Toll.
Here.
And Chair Peters.
Here. Okay, a form of the PCCBA is physically present at the meeting in regards to Member Sorensen. A notice was received in accordance with village policy. Member Sorensen will be deemed authorized to attend the meeting electronically unless a motion objected to the members' electronic attendance is made, seconded, and approved by two-thirds of the members of the PCCBA physically present at the meeting. If no such motion is made, then Ann's request to attend the meeting electronically shall be deemed approved. Hearing no motion. Ann's participation is approved. Thank you. Agenda item number two. On agenda items and visitor public comment time, the commission allocates fifteen minutes during each meeting for those individuals who would like the opportunity to address the board on any matter not listed on the agenda can appear and present. Each person addressing the Joint Land Commission and ZBAs has asked to limit their comments to a maximum of three minutes. Anyone wishing to present tonight? Nothing electronically?
No.
All right. Agenda item number three, Ms. People, if you want to introduce that.
The minutes for the next one? Yeah, so in your packet should be the minutes from, I believe, August 16th. So were there any edits that anyone found for those?
I already found a couple, but I'll just hand you my notebook.
Okay. All right.
The back pages.
Okay. So yes, we will.
Very minor.
Make some of those minor edits. And if anyone else has any. I know that Member Fisher also had a small edit as well, just a table.
Okay. Subject to those minimal revisions, is there a motion?
No.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Agenda item number four, public hearing, residential variance variations, 610 Sunrise Avenue. Ms. People, if you want to introduce that.
In order to perform an interior renovation with partial facade changes and to revise existing hardscapes at 610 Sunrise Avenue, Morgantae Wilson Architects, Elliot Flaws, as agent property owner, seeks minor variations related to floor area ratio and impervious surface coverage. The floor area ratio request is mostly due to the creation of a habitable room in the attic, and the impervious surface coverage request will actually decrease over what is existing, but still exceeds what is allowed by code. And the petitioner is in attendance tonight. The PCCBA has decision-making, is the decision-making body on these matters. And just so everyone knows, we are having some issues with our EV system. And so if you can just speak loudly and project so that we can get it for the people on Zoom and for recording, we would appreciate it.
Yeah, I guess before we get started, if anyone wishes to present tonight, please stand and raise your right hand, and we'll swear you in. Do you soundless swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Yes.
Please be seated, or please proceed.
Thank you.
State your name for the record.
Yeah, my name is Dan Lee. Live at 610 Sunrise Avenue. This is my wife Sheri. Let's see, we've been residents of Lake Bluff for ten years, and were previously at 531 Scranton, East Scranton. We've been at 610 for about three, four years. We are, as the notes indicated, in working on a renovation of the house. It's like an 1890s home, I don't think anyone's ever been in it, but it needs some updates and hasn't been updated in many years. We are preserving, you know, the house. We're not doing anything like exteriorized in terms of demolition or anything like that. The basement of the house is unfinished and really unusable, and we don't really have a lot of space to work with within the kind of existing floor plan. So we are going to renovate and make the space above the garage usable and livable space, and that's why we're here tonight is because that triggers a variance. So I'll let the Morgantae team here get into the details as necessary.
Is this working?
It's not. Yeah, you can just project.
My name is Fred Wilson. I'm a partner at Morgantae Wilson Architects, and this is Elliot Flaws, an associate in my firm. Elliot's going to walk us through the nuts and bolts and the mathematics of it all, and then obviously if there's questions after our presentation, let's, we'll go through that.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Elliot, with Morgantae Wilson. As Dan had mentioned, the renovation of this project as it pertains to the variance includes new window openings as well as revisions to hardscaping. And in doing so, the property is considered existing nonconforming for both FAR and impervious surface, as they both are above what's the allowable for the village standards. But the proposed work actually decreases the amount of impervious surface overall from the existing nonconformity, but the reduction is still over what's allowable. Also, we're increasing the FAR by utilizing an existing space within the structure above the garage, but we're not increasing the bulk of the structure itself. So if you look at the screen here, we've got some existing photos of the property. So at the photo on the top left is the existing property as seen from Sunrise Avenue, actually facing the lake. So you can see the very small front yard that they have with a parking space to the left. The rear yard is actually all an alley. There's no actual yard space in the backyard, as it's a shared alley with others on that that's alley. The north side yard is very small, about five feet, and not really usable. And then the south side yard, the southeast corner is, has a lot of mature landscaping, followed by this pathway and minimal yard space. If we could go to the next slide, please. In terms of the existing site plan, you can see where the property, where the building actually sits with the existing front yard. It has an existing front patio that seems disconnected from the house itself, which we're looking to improve with part of this impervious surface variation. The shared alley takes up most of the entire back rear yard. The north side yard is, as I mentioned before, is fairly small, with mature landscaping kind of focused in this back corner on the south side yard. So the proposed site plan, what we're looking to do is actually remove the stoop and some of the hardscaping here on the south side yard. We're going to be removing the front bay for some new window openings, and we want to extend the existing patio all the way to the existing concrete retaining wall so we can open up that connection between interior and exterior of the building. And in doing so, we also be removing some of the hardscaping along the northwest corner of the side yard. So you can see here in the proposed first floor plan, that connection between the front patio and the interior space. Before, the only way to get to that space was actually coming through the front yard, and there was no physical connection between the interior and the exterior other than through that front door. If we go to the next page, we'll get to the second floor. And in the second floor, above the garage, there's an attic space that's only accessible through the attic hatch here in the garage. So what we're going to be proposing to do is utilize that space, if you scroll down a little bit further, by adding a staircase to access that room, which is what's causing us to go over an FAR. So we're not actually changing any of the roof structure or increasing the bulk, we're simply just activating that space that's already built within the project.
You can see the actual, if you can go back, the actual bedroom. That middle bedroom is pretty small. The south bedroom is a decent sized bedroom, but the, and the north bedroom, we're going to be using as a closet space. So we really needed that fourth bedroom to help spread out that second floor.
You don't have to raise the ceiling.
We're not raising the, you'll see on the rear elevation, we're not, it's kind of a odd shape, like not quite a gambrel, but there's a flat part. We're not dormory, we're not adding any space to it.
So you'll see on the exterior elevations, if you can actually zoom out a little bit, where we can see all four, because we've got existing and proposed. On the front elevation, where the patio is, we're getting rid of this bay, and we're opening that up with a big, large slider door with some transoms, and then opening up the view in the master suite, which is up above, with some larger windows. And then on the back of the garage, you can see that the roof line doesn't change for that habitable space above the garage that we're looking to create. So you'll see on back elevation, that kind of gambrel style roof. The only thing that we're doing in that space is making some larger windows, so that we have some egress windows and easier to operate. But the structure of the garage itself does not change with the added room there.
We worked the stairs, so when you come up, you kind of follow the roof line, so that we didn't have to dorm around to get that added stair. So it comes up and follows that.
So the next two diagrams go through the existing and proposed impervious surface. So our current existing impervious surface, we're 10.1% over what's allowed, but with the changes that we're doing, we're going to be able to reduce that down to 7.6%. If you go to the next slide, these are the diagrams for our FAR. The basement is actually excluded because it's built before 1950, and it doesn't project above five feet above the ground. But we do show it, and then we're excluding it. The first floor, we're excluding in the proposed, since we're removing this stoop and steps on the side, this gets reduced, reduces the FAR as well as reducing the FAR by removing that bay. But what pushes us over is the added square footage for the bonus room above the garage in the existing attic. So this is the existing attic space that we're turning into the habitable space.
And it is raw. The only way to get up to it is the pull-down ladder, so it's actually even tricky to get storage up there, you know, where you're going up the pull-down ladder. So you see the stair work kind of ties in from the bedroom area, and so it'll be obviously much more accessible. But now it counts.
So what I'd like to do now is just kind of run through some of the standards and provide some feedback on that. So when it comes to the practical difficulty or hardship for the FAR, because we're not adding bulk to the project or to the building itself, we're using an existing space. So the hardship would be if we're not approved to do this, then we're not being able to utilize the entire house as it's currently being built, since we're not adding any bulk. When it comes to the impervious surface, our clients had purchased the home in 2019 with these improvements already on the property, so it's not a hardship that they created themselves. But what we're doing is seeking to actually repair, modify, and improve those to bring it more into conformity when it comes to impervious surface. For the unique physical conditions, for the FAR, again, it's existing space within the structure that's already built. We're not adding any additional bulk. And for impervious surface, we do have some narrow side yards. Full rear yard is considered, is hardscaping because of that shared alley. And currently, the front yard has that disconnect. That's really the only habitable, habitable space outside that can enjoy the fresh air. When it comes to not merely a special privilege for the FAR, we understand there are similar variances within the village that have been granted for similar cases where existing structure has, is being reinterpreted space to become habitable space and add to the FAR that was originally exempt. And for impervious surface, the proposed work overall reduces that nonconformity for the connection between inside and out that we're trying to do. When it comes to code purposes and FAR, there is no added bulk, as I've mentioned before, and we're actually just redefining that existing space within that built structure.
And we're adding egress windows so that it could function as a bedroom for code.
For code purposes with impervious surface, the, as I mentioned before, the proposed work does overall reduce the nonconformity, but we are still over. And when it comes to public health and safety, both FAR and impervious surface regarding this project, there is no impact to that. And so with that, that concludes our presentation. If you guys have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Who would like to start? Ms. Fisher?
Just a couple of questions. The tree in front, does that stay? Does it have to go?
It stays.
It stays? Okay, great. I didn't see neighbor responses in the packet. Have neighbors responded?
Yeah, we have three. So the Karate's that live across the street from the Sandersons are next door neighbor, and then we have another neighbor directly behind us in the alley, and all three approved and are good with these changes. And they have signed letters, so it should be in the packets as well.
I did send those over the other day, the signed letters, and I do have copies here if you'd like to see those.
Okay, I just didn't see them on the packet. And then last, I just, it's more of curiosity, but the neighbor to the north of yours, is that a buildable lot still? I know that a house was taken down, it's now the Wildflowers and stuff. Is that still, is that a buildable lot still, or did they end up conjoining two lots or something?
The Karate's bought that. And from my understanding, in an auction, so they own both of those.
Right, I just was curious whether it was still a buildable lot or just not a set-in?
That I don't know.
Depends on the lot size.
Yeah. Okay, never mind. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Uh, Ms. Danny?
I love what you say, repair, modify, and improve with our older homes in the city. So I really don't have any objection. I think there's a, you know, I know I can't talk about the design, but I think you have a good team, are a good team, and I think it could be a beautiful outcome. So I have no issue. I also think having the shared alley is a unique circumstance for you in our village, so that again is a hardship, I think, just because you inherited the shared access to your garage. So other than that, please do the repair, modify, and improve.
Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Sorensen?
Ann, hold on just one second, I'm sorry.
I just, out of curiosity, what is the size, what will the size be of the room above the garage that you're making accessible and replacing as a, you know, it could be a bedroom? Oh, there it is.
It's probably about thirteen by sixteen, the bedroom itself.
Great. That's nice. I do, I agree with Jill. It's a well-done, well-done repurposing of space and use of space, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sorensen. Member Miller?
Two questions, kind of related. First would be, is there any flooding issues with the property at this point?
No.
And second, is the patio in the front, is that concrete?
It's concrete, and then it has bluestone on top of it, so we hope to keep the bluestone.
I mean, you remove the concrete and keep the bluestone?
Yeah.
So it'll be more impervious rather than impervious.
Yeah.
The only thing that would remain would be the existing concrete retaining wall that's surrounding that patio and current impervious surface.
The patio itself, impervious, will be impervious.
The patio itself is bluestone, yes.
Without the concrete.
Yeah.
Okay, I agree. I think this is a great project, and I commend you that.
Uh, Mr. Toll?
My questions have already been answered. I also think this is a great repurpose of a beautiful home, so I, it's no objections.
Thank you.
Mr. Russell?
No questions, I understand what you're doing, and I also agree with Jill.
Yeah, my only concern was the impervious issue, so to speak, but it's been reduced, and we've given excellent explanations as to no history of drainage, no history of impairment on the neighbors, so uncomfortable. Any further discussion? Is there a motion?
Jill, make the motion.
Okay, I'm making a motion to approve as its.
Is there a second?
Second.
Member Danley?
Aye.
Member Fisher?
Aye.
Member Miller?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Sorensen?
Aye.
Member Toll?
Aye.
And Chair Peters?
Aye.
Thank you.
I hope your contractor doesn't keep you out of the house too long.
You've done this before.
Yeah, so we will be in touch about an upcoming board meeting with the village board. Or actually, no, I'm sorry, this one is emotional to you. So, yeah, so you are, yeah, it's the board, so, sorry.
Okay, agenda number five, public hearing, Grace Methodist Church, 244 Center Avenue.
Lake Bluff Grace United Methodist Church, along with Concrete Rose Learning Center and the Music Institute of Chicago, are seeking the following for 244 East Center Avenue. One, a zoning tax amendment to allow child daycare services as a special use in the Rio District. Two, a Rio development plan review for use of rooms in the existing building for child daycare services and music school. And three, a special use permit to allow child daycare services. And of note, the church was previously issued a special use permit for daycare in 2002, which is no longer active. And the petitioner is in attendance tonight to present their request. The PCCBA is a recommending body on these matters.
Yeah, if you could state your name for the record, please.
Thank you. Emily Selvee, S.E.L.V.E., and I live at 764 Oak Avenue in Lake Bluff, and I am a member of Grace United Methodist Church. Can you put the PowerPoint up for me? Actually, I can start from before you do that. I think many of you saw my presentation a few weeks ago, when I kind of gave you a preview of coming attractions, but for members of the neighborhood that may be here, that wanted to get at least a quick summary of what our plans are, some updates, and answering the questions people might have about what we'd like to do. So as many of you probably know, that Grace Church has a very large education wing on the west side of the church building. It was used for Sunday school for many years, but for the last several years, it's remained very scarcely utilized, and we have been looking for ways to rent our space to other organizations that can bring some income into the church, but also mindful of what would be organizations that also fit with the vision, the mission of here in Lake Bluff. So we've been really fortunate. We've been in discussions with two organizations. The first is Concrete Rose Learning Center. This is a really interesting project. It's early childhood education for children here in Lake Bluff that qualify for free preschool. There are currently no options for these children here, and there are forty of them. So that would be an annual household income of $60,000 plus for a family of four. And you know, these kids here in our town, starting preschool with peers that have been in preschool for two and three years, and if they have access to preschool here in the town, that's a huge setback for them starting behind. So, can you do the next slide, Karen? So what does this mean, actually? I mean, we know that children have the greatest chance of succeeding in school if they attend high-quality childhood education. And I'm talking childhood education here, I'm not talking daycare. So what we're proposing to do here at Grace is early childhood education, just to be clear at that point. We know the children that benefit the most from early preschool are children with disability and homelessness. And here we have these forty kids in our community that are at risk for academic failure because they don't have access to a program of childcare, and this program literally gives them a place to go. So a little bit about what Concrete Rose Learning Center is proposed to do here at Grace. They would have the capacity to serve all the, well, almost all the children that would be eligible here in our two towns. They'd use two classrooms that are education wing. There would be a small outdoor play space on the west side of the building. The hours would be eight to 3:30, but there are morning and afternoon sessions, so there would be seventeen to twenty kids in each session, morning and afternoons. The pickup would all be done via the church parking lot on Scranton, so there would be no cars parked in the street to drop off children. Everything would be done there in a very organized way. In fact, that would be the only door that children and teachers would be coming in through, would be the back door of that education wing. The school year would be September through June, there's no summer session. Their, the executive director of the program, who has been the one responsible for setting up the school and getting the grant funding, would be on site. They're looking for probably four teachers and teacher's assistants in the middle week.
Four plus or four total?
Pardon me?
Four plus or four total?
Or total. Yeah, or total. Potentially exceeds the DCFS requirements or statute. Next slide, please. So, oh, back one, there we go. So I call this slide the roadmap, but it's more like the traffic jam of getting all of this done, because it's literally kind of happening all at the same time. So here we are, Lake Bluff, looking to get all our approvals and all our permits that we need from all of you. But DCFS, literally DCFS makes you guys look like really head of the light case. I mean, this DCFS document, it's 150 pages that we have to comply to get this preschool in the building. And it is down to how many square feet per student, what has to be in every first day a kid, what the programs are, the teachers. It is really, really a complex step, a very high bar, and we've gone through most of it. We're still looking to get an inspection from the state fire marshal, who'll be coming to make sure that we're up to code on everything for that. And the health inspectors, they'll be coming out to look at everything. We're not going to be served, there's no food served, so we don't have a kitchen, but you know, drinking fountains and a refrigerator. Again, there's a lot of stuff, so we have to comply with the DCFS. So that is ongoing, okay, good progress there. We did get some good news that Sharonda Brown, who was doing this program, is, has basically gotten an award for career funding, and that's a big feather in her cap, it's a big deal. And this was awarded to her, part for her hard work putting it together, but also because Lake Bluff and Lake Forest typically identify as child care desert, so we literally qualify for this funding from the state. So it's a two-year grant, and at the end of the term, she would be going back to the state board event to apply for another grant. So as it stands now, that the, we've got approved, they have seventeen children in each session, morning and afternoon, based on the physical space that we have available right now. So the next state step after that would literally be marketing for the program to the communities and getting those children enrolled. They're looking to start in January with that, the first person to school. So that's where we are in that. The Music Institute of Chicago is the other church that we're looking to share our space with. They're a music school that was founded in 1931. They have a large building in Evanston. They have locations in a number of suburbs, including other churches. they have locations in a number of suburbs, including other churches, so this is something that they've done. They are interested in two classrooms, maybe three in our buildings to do individual reconstruction. I think they actually have a location in West Lake Forest out by the senior center. So this would be actually a lot closer for the students that they have to live here in Lake Bluff. And I know they're actually a local, they're a church there. So the hours are nine to nine, Monday through Friday, but the most of the lessons are really going to be after school at times for kids that are young. They do have a number of adult students though, so they wanted to be able to get access to the building during the day for adults that would be coming in after lessons. And once again, we have the same procedures, pop-up pickup in the church parking lot, nobody parking on the street. That would be the only entrance for those, for those folks as well. We're on a little bit of faster track for that group, they would like to start in October this year. And from what I've heard, it would kind of double the need to do paperwork wise to get that moved ahead a little faster. So as soon as they get their pianos moved in, it will be ready to start, if you want to get your people to go ahead for that. So that's where we are. If anyone has any questions, I can do my best to answer them, but we're super excited to have these groups at our church, and I really believe they're adequate for, like, especially the programs they're in.
Are the kids' families already demarcated, so you know where to go?
They are not. They've been identified by the census, so we know they're there. So they'll be, you know, you have to, they're, you can go to the schools because you can see families that have been eligible for, you know, the lunch program, and there's a place to do it, I think Sharona's basically. It is interesting though, because in our communities, it's not as, not as obvious where all these families are.
And how you market that in the community like this, and not put a stigma on it? Just doesn't, it's nothing to do with you doing this, I'm just curious.
Um, you know, I don't know how to, how to answer that. I don't think that there's going to be a sign out there saying, you know, preschool for, you know, lower-income families. It's going to be, I think it's going to be a terrific resource, that's going to be welcome. And I think that the community should feel good about providing. So marketing will be interesting, because I think that even Sharona would have talked about this. You know, if you want to market something, this is going to be a different kind of outreach, because they'll be getting seats though. But I'm hopeful, I think we can do it.
I have a question. So there was a special use permit issued in 2002 for daycare. Was there a daycare that was offered in the church at that point?
There was Little Scouts daycare, that's at Lake Forest High School now. They were in that space for either four or five years, from 2002 to, I believe, 2007, while they renovated a space in the west campus. So we've had daycare in the building, it's not the first time we've done it. I mean, that building is set up to be a school, it's not like we're retrofitting something else. There's, there's little bathrooms, and everything there is literally in place, so to.
Do you know the, the number of children that were part of that daycare?
Forty.
Forty. Any, and this may be a, a question for staff, but were there any issues at the time that they held the daycare at that point? I mean, were there any complaints in traffic or anything else as far as you know?
I don't believe so. Drew, do you know of any?
Not that I can recall, no.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, does the grant that required that your clients only be from Lake Bluff and Lake Forest?
Yes. It is, it's targeted in a statute-based school district. So that, like, for example, Lake Bluff would extend west into any child.
So it's a school, it's a school district, average.
Based, yes, yes. Right, that would be the.
It's a larger.
That would be.
It's a larger base. I'm, I'm a little surprised by the hours you're asking for. I'm assuming that a lot of these parents would work. And getting them there at eight, and I don't want you to have to come back to us.
No, and I'll tell you.
I want to have a, if you're approved, starting at eight, that seems late for, and I noticed the previous daycare in 2002, when it operated started at seven. Not saying you're operating, but your kids', an ability for some parents to be able to drop their children off early.
I, I asked the exact same question to Sharona, because it was kind of, I, I was puzzled as well. And she said, "It's out there and it's working." Like, okay. But I mean, again, this is not meant to be daycare, this isn't a place where you drop your child off on your way to work and pick them up on your way home. This is literally like a two-hour early education program, in the, one in the morning, one in the afternoon.
And there isn't a faucet of the program to help provide transportation for the children at all? They have to be?
Not, not as it's done now, but I think if that ends up being an issue, that's something that, you know, these grants can be amended. It's not really my area of expertise, the specifics of the grant. But I, I asked the same question, and that was the response I got, that it seems to be working. And it might be that, you know, daycare providers that are taking care of kids, drop them off, we'll see.
Okay, and then is there any, if someone were asked, would, would their child be allowed to attend both morning and afternoon sessions? Or is it totally structured so that a child would only attend one of the other?
Well, we're, we're, we only have enough slots to the morning plus afternoon to address the number of children that qualify. So if they, you wouldn't want one child taking a spot, so that somebody else couldn't go at all.
So it seems to me you're going to have available space, because you've only got thirty-nine.
Well, they're forty.
Or is it thirty-nine, thirty-nine homes?
It's thirty-nine total children.
Children, yeah.
And there, there's space right now for thirty-four max.
For thirty-four, okay.
Right. It'll be interesting to see how it.
And, and then this is a question that is both more in my mind for the music end of things. Have you identified where in the building they're going to be, and particularly the music?
Yes.
Is that going to be on the, along the west wall? Is there air conditioning in all the rooms, do the windows?
Oh, you mean, are people going to hear, like, piano playing?
Drums?
No, it's all piano and strings, just.
Just piano and strings.
Right, that's what they, they're not going to be brass.
And, and have the, I looked through the packet in detail, I could not find, have you even decided where, what spaces are going to be used?
Yes.
Second floor, first floor?
Yes, they will have to be the, because of DCFS requirements, we have to keep the preschool separate from the music school, just for safety purposes. So we're going to do the music school on the first floor. It will be the first two, as you walk in the back entrance, it'll be the first two rooms on your left.
So away, away from the.
It'll face the parking lot, basically.
Okay, for music?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't, I mean, we, we kind of did a little walkthrough, like, banging on pianos and, like, walking outside. I don't think there was an issue with it at all.
Okay, well, that's good to know, because with another issue in the community right now.
What else?
Noise is, noise is hypersensitive, and I didn't, we don't want to get into a situation.
No.
But once again, for clarity, the, the two music rooms are going to be on the east side of the corridor on the first floor, and not the rooms with the windows open to the house, directly to the neighbor?
No, they're going to be on the east side of the, of the border.
Okay. Are the, are all the rooms air-conditioned?
They are not, they are not. So we have air-conditioning units in some, and we'll probably go to supportable units for the preschool in hot days, but they'll do that.
The playground space, I'm assuming at the minimum, you're going to have to put up fences at each end, because it did say no improvements, but in reality.
Right, it's, you know, it's.
It seems very small, and I know there was a playground, I know there was a playground, I remember the playground for the Little Scouts, and there was a playground out there.
Right, it's the same playground.
And was that twenty by twenty, to six?
You know, I'm not sure, they may have used, it might have extended all the way to center. But right now, we have the garden set alone center, so it would just do the back half of that space. But in DCFS, that Yelshie came out with a measuring tape, and she'll tell you exactly how much space you need outdoors per child. And we just.
And they've, they've approved that, okay. But you would be fencing, you would, it has to be fenced in there.
It would be fenced, and then on one side, it's, you know, it's, they, some of the rules, you could, like, put cones if it's not going to be a permanent, you know. For example, if, they could put temporary cones up to keep the kids in, something that we could be the rule for church on Sunday, so. But the Lake DCFS, it's extremely specific about how we have to keep the kids inside.
And then I would encourage you, I know your application says no equipment, no playground equipment at all. And I know you wouldn't have anything fancy for tiny kids like this, but I would encourage you.
Oh, well, hey.
Maybe to get an ordinance, to have the ordinance provide for the addition of some small play structures.
Oh, I, I.
Because I don't want you coming back for some minor issue, and you're dealing with a bureaucracy.
That'd be.
So that's why my question's about time.
No, I really appreciate that. So if, if it, if we have, like, a small, like, little climbing something, or a little slide, is that something we need to, is that common to play with?
I mean, your application should say that, because right now it says, no, you specifically say no equipment.
Okay.
I'm just recommending that you err on the side.
I appreciate that.
Just, just so that if you move through the process, you don't have to look at it.
Go ahead, no, that sounds good, thank you.
And then before you go to the village board, to very seriously consider if the time is really what you want. Because if the village adopts an ordinance and says you have to start at such and such a time, and you find you need to start a little earlier, it could become an enforcement issue, and I, I just think you're, you're really strict with your, with your requests.
Yeah, I just kind of wench by what they, I think, probably conforms with the grant and what Sharona wants, but I hear you. So is it, are you suggesting I just pick broader hours so that it's?
Well, within reason, within reason, but I, I just, I just thought that with getting a child there, that a lot of the parents are going to need to be there before you drop.
Okay.
That just seems, from a practical perspective.
Well, it doesn't hurt to.
Everybody's up and going by then.
Yeah, doesn't hurt to.
In terms of, if they have school-aged children.
Okay, all right, thank you, I'll do that.
That's all I had, thank you.
And thank you, George, several of the things I was going to ask about, but so, the last thing is just, so right now, it's hinging upon, you've got your grant, and it's only hinging upon DCFS for the, for the daycare.
Yes, there is this, like, appeals process that people have to go through for ten days after the initial grant gets approved. So it'll be actually completely final in less than two weeks, and she's already gotten that. So I don't anticipate that. But really, it's really DCFS, if you will, that, those are our last steps, otherwise.
And do you have any timeline for DCFS, do they give you anything, or?
Oh, I know, it's things like the fire marshal. Like, you have to make a request like three weeks ago, and they come in. So that's, I think those two are going to be, and then you need to set up the room for DCFS, exactly how you would have it for the kids, you know. Every, there are scissors, every bolt and door, it's buried straight, so. So that would probably be a little bit closer to October, that'll happen with DCFS becoming attached, and we'll get the classroom, I guess. But it is, it's, it's a stated.
Okay, thank you.
I missed a question, and once again, this relates to noise and working with the neighbors. Would you be opposed to the village putting a time limit on the maximum playtime, so that this doesn't turn into four hours?
I'll, I'll tell you that it's because it's a, it's just going to be a two-and-a-half hour program or something. They really want the kids in the school part of it, and I believe, and I can let you know for sure, I think it's only a half hour that they're outside playing at any one time. And that would be.
Well, that's exactly what I was going to suggest, is that it be something in that timeframe to protect the neighbors, because a group of five-year-olds can probably make as much noise as a violin that isn't played very well.
Thank you, I'll do that.
Ms. Sorensen?
Thank you, but I, I actually had my questions already asked by Member Russell. I was, I was also wondering, I'm still a little curious about how the transportation work out, will work out. But I guess we'll go on a little bit of faith with that, and hope that it works. And, and my question was just about, you know, location of the preschool classes compared to the music school classes. So I really don't have any other comments. I remember when the building was used a long time ago for preschool, and I just recalled that it was well-respected. So I wish you'd all with us.
Thank you.
Then I guess just one or two questions with respect to possible conditions in the music center aspect. Would you be agreeable to eliminate two piano and strings?
You know, I, I wouldn't want to say that, because, you know, it's a music school, and they do, and they have little ensemble groups sometimes. If they were to, you know, add some woodwinds or something to a, to a group, I, I think it would be difficult pretty good to constrain them like that. I honestly don't expect that to be, be a problem. And this is two classrooms, so the most we're going to have anybody in there are two teachers and two students at any one time. So it's not going to be a breakaway orchestra kind of situation. So I have a.
And just as a note, the daycare is what the special use is. Looking at the music school and the daycare are also looking for that Rio Plan development, but the schools are a permitted use in the Rio District, so some of the conditions would be more related to the daycare.
So the music program has nothing to, you have nothing to say about that, as far as?
Well, the Rio Plan, the Rio Development Review is part of this as well.
Yeah, it, it's, right now, the music school is already considered, under the Rio Plan, considered special use. That's why we did a tax amendment as well for the childcare services. So they're, we just kind of think it was two separate issues, but they still fall under Rio Development Plan properties in Rio Development. But they're still considered, like, we're still limited childcare and music.
And we have to approve both separately?
I mean, to clarify, we, we can't, we do have the abilities to suggest additions to the village board, and the village board has.
Yeah, oh, yeah, for the organs, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
For, for the musicals?
Yes.
Well, that's not a special use, if that's permitted.
Well, it's, it's still the organs with conditions, unless they want a.
Rio Plan, or?
Or this, well, I guess it depends on what, what condition we want to impose, if they're for the school or for childcare.
And we had someone asking about for the music school.
For the music? What kind of conditions?
Well, such as, they're presenting that the rooms are beyond the east side, which is far better for the homes to the west. And I would recommend that be a condition, that the music rooms stay on the east side of the hallway, not facing the homeowners. Just because it's so much better from a noise perspective.
If I may?
Yes, if you could state your name for the record, sir.
Sure, my name is Holdunk, I live at 312 East Center Avenue. So I'm right around the corner from the church, I lived there for five years with my family. And this was, I'm a trustee of the church. But in five years that I lived there, between choir and a bell choir and piano practice, the only thing I've ever heard come out of that church is an organ. And if you don't like organ play, music, there's probably something wrong with you.
No.
So I, I fully appreciate the consideration of the noise issue, but I think from music school, I think it's a little misplaced. I don't think that would be an issue at all.
I appreciate that.
For sure.
Thank you.
I respectfully disagree, if the rooms are on the west side and the windows are open, and there are music lessons all day, and there's a family's window twenty, thirty feet away, that's why I'm interested. I want to, don't get me wrong, I want to support, I hope this works out. And it's, I'm grateful to hear that there's. And it's, I'm grateful to hear that they're suggesting you go into the east side rooms. That's, that's all.
That's actually the plan, remain carpeted those rooms, that's, that's.
They're carpeting the rooms?
They will be carpeting the rooms. And it's all cinder block and a whole, I mean, if the windows open, that's them straight, but it's cinder block construction and there's no way that they can.
Any, uh, any other, uh, any further discussion among the commissioners? Hearing none, is there a motion or a series of motions?
Gary, does public hasn't had a chance to comment?
Hold on.
Sorry.
Do you, I'm, I'm still checking. Do we, do we, does anyone else from the public have any other comments regarding this public hearing?
I have a question. Can I do a?
Yes, so just take your hand for the record. Were you sworn in?
Pardon?
Were you sworn in?
Uh, no, because I didn't know that I was going to be sworn in. That's okay. But I will tell the truth. Uh, Jane Petrigas.
We should swear your ass.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. You solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you.
Jane Petrigas, I live at 210 East Center, so right down the block from the church. My questions were primarily, one, um, the music, I kind of agree with the idea of limiting, but my bigger question was if there are two sessions of preschool and there are only 38 potential students, are, is the plan to run two sessions at half full? Or is it going to be run one session full up? That's my, my question. How do you tend to use the space? Will you run it all day or you condense and have one morning?
I can answer that.
Okay, thank you.
So there'll be two, there'll be a morning and afternoon session. They're separate. So there would be 17 children at the most in each of those two sessions.
That's not my question, no.
Oh, if.
That's assuming everyone says they're going to the tent.
Okay.
If you only get 17 people who sign up, how would you fill?
Oh, you know what? I'm probably not the best one to answer that, but I mean, the plan is to offer two sessions. It wouldn't necessarily have to max out, both of them.
Okay, that's, so you will run both sessions with just 50% capacity?
Yes, I mean, the grant is funding the program, not the students, right, so.
Any other comments from the public that are physically present or via the internet?
So can I just, just clarify, so if I'm, um, I should be making these additions to the plan I submitted before it goes to the board next week? Make these modifications like, like they made play tonight and, um, some of these sort of things, or if I was extending the hours, I should be doing that ahead of that meeting?
So I believe the two that member Russell suggested were, um, be adding in that play structures may be included in the play area and then also increasing the daycare times, um, you know, maybe a little bit before and after what you suggested, just because they are limiting. Um, and yeah, you can just submit something to us to.
Just an update, a letter update or something?
Yeah, that would be fine.
Was there something about the musicals on the east side?
Yeah, yeah.
That's what we're talking about.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to find in the code. Um, yes, if, yeah, if, that's just what we're talking about, right? Just the location base of the room for the.
Well, I, just in general, if someone has to come to us for a special use, even though it's a type of special use that's authorized, we certainly should be able to recommend conditions to the village board.
Yeah.
So, I mean, because she could come in and wanting a full orchestra to rehearse every day, so.
Right.
And even though it's, the music school is a, a listed on the use of, acceptable uses, we still have the ability to recom- I would, I would, I'm going to be shocked if we don't have the ability to recommend conditions.
You do, so it depends, it, it, it depends on what it is. I mean, it, it, it's going to be fact-specific, uh, but, I mean, in this case, it's up to you guys, you're still recommending by. We can craft it in a way in the ordinance that, you know, is careful consideration, but again, it's still, still recommended by.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, so we, we can, yes, put conditions on, on it.
So is that also to make sure that we use it on the east side?
If I, when it comes times to vote, I mean, I'm going to be suggesting that that be one of our things that we're voting on, that the music rooms stay on the east side of the corridors on the first floor. Just to limit the, that'll go a long way towards limiting any potential noise issue in mind.
Certainly possible.
Any further discussion among the commissioners? And nothing internet-based?
No, we don't have any members, um, from the public.
Hearing nothing further, uh, is there a motion or is there a series of motions?
I'd like to know that we recommend approval to the village board for the, uh, requested uses at the, at the church, the subject property, um, with the conditions that, uh, I think they should really be enumerated out because there's, there's floating times in the paperwork that we were given. And, but I think we should list in the ordinance because there's not, the ordinance is very generic right now.
Yeah, we can list the big conditions.
The title doesn't even reference the music school, if we want to put that in the title, but that the conditions include that, um, the music, um, rooms be on the, on the first floor on the east side of the corridor, um, that the playground, um, playtimes be limited to, say, something like 40 minutes, the time to get in and out of the 30-minute actual playtime, um, per, per session, so.
And the, and the, and the, about play structures, right?
And then that also you've, you've stated specifically that you're going to ask everyone participating in music and, um, the, the daycare to be dropped off in the rear, that that be a requirement. I think it's much safer than people popping out on the narrow Center Avenue street trying to reach into the backseat to get young children out of the car. Doing it in the parking lot would be much better, that that be a requirement. And I think that's it. If you, if you want to go for a little broader timeframe, that's your, that's your choice. I just brought it up. And then the same thing with the, with the playground, but I think your proposal should also note that you are going to be putting in fences at the north and south limits to the play area.
Yeah, but they don't have to be barriers.
It doesn't comply with, it doesn't, you know, wouldn't technically comply with the plan you submitted, which says no, no additional work outside, but you are going to put some fences in as a minimum.
I said no structural, you said no playground.
Oh, that for sure, structures.
And even the place, minor play structures. I assume they would be little plastic things for three-year-olds.
Okay, thank you. I really appreciate your input.
So was that a motion, George?
That was a motion.
Oh, wow.
And Claire has got every word of it.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Do you want to go through it again?
No, I'll trust the process.
Any further discussion? All right, can we have a vote please?
Yes, sorry. Groucho's just laying over here. Okay, so, um, member Fisher?
Aye.
Member Miller?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Sorensen?
Aye.
Member Toll?
Aye.
And member Danley and Chair Peters?
Aye.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate your time and support and I will make these additions and get them to you tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you.
Go next Wednesday, yeah. It's our next village board meeting, a little.
All right, uh, agenda number six, public hearing, Lawrence, 101 to 113 East Scranton Avenue. Let's see what we have to deliver on, please.
Yeah. For 101 to 113 East Scranton Avenue, Community Pub of Lake Bluff LLC seeks amendments to the special use permit granted by ordinance 2020-4 in order to decrease the proposed floor area of the building by approximately 215 square feet, increase the outdoor seating area by approximately 296 square feet, and remove a condition requiring three additional parking spaces. The petitioner is in attendance tonight to present their request and the PCZBA is, uh, recommending body on these patterns.
Thank you. If you could, uh, state your name for the record, please.
Uh, my name is Scott Stradup. Girard Lawrence. Can I just, were you able to get that slide up?
Yes, I have that.
Okay, perfect. Just to follow along.
Yeah, hold on, sorry.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. My name is Scott Stradup and I will be presenting this petition tonight on behalf of the property owner, Lawrence Property LLC. The primary intent of this petition is to seek reapproval for the adaptive reuse of an existing vacated bank drive-through on the south end of the Lawrence property and to repurpose this structure as an authentic English pub and garden. This petition was submitted and unanimously approved in February of 2020. However, the petitioner wishes to make a few modifications to the design and the floor plan. Uh, so as a result, we are directed to return here to PCZBA for review and consideration of these planned modifications. So I will present the prior approval tonight as well as the proposed modifications. What you see here, the Lawrence family purchased this Scranton Avenue building known as the John Griffith Sword Building in 1979, opening their family business, Lawrence Interiors, that's staying here. Many improvements have been made over the years and in 2003, the building became individually listed on the National Register of Historic Places. In 2004, Lake Forest Bank and Trust became a tenant and added a drive-through facility seen here in the next photo. And then in 2014, the bank vacated the premises and subsequent efforts to secure a tenant who could utilize this drive-through have been unsuccessful. Lawrence Property LLC wishes to redevelop the abandoned drive-through area for use as an English-themed pub and garden, serving both food and drink. Uh, we believe that both the design of the pub and the current area will contribute positively to the businesses and the central business district by redeveloping what is currently a vacant and underutilized space. Mr. Lawrence is uniquely qualified for this venture as he has spent the past 20, 30 years traveling throughout England, studying the rich history of the public house and is also a collector and reseller of English furnishings. The Lawrence family has been instrumental in other light projects locally, such as the original renovation to the Deer Path Inn. Mr. Lawrence provided his expertise in similar fashion and was able to obtain landmark designation for this property as well. So I'm just going to show you a few photos of the existing, uh, drive-through here as it exists today. We'll scroll through these. This is the current condition. Okay, and then, uh, the next one should be an animation. And then here is a short animation of the prior approval, uh, back in 2020. Much of the architectural detail will remain the same with the proposed modifications. The proposed design uses high-quality traditional materials, uh, consistent with the existing building and preserving the integrity of the architecture of the building. Okay, you could probably, I guess we want to go through the whole thing. This is kind of moving towards the back part of mine. Now, this is the prior, uh, prior design, so I'll go into the design modifications next. Okay, after consulting with, uh, numerous experts in the restaurant business, several recommendations were made to improve the utility and flow of the floor plan. So this is the prior, uh, approved plan back in 2020. And then the next slide, uh, shows the, uh, proposed modifications. We're moving the kitchen addition into the existing building and, um, taking over more of the interior space for, uh, the restrooms as well and then reducing the size of the additions. Uh, next slide, um, this is the, uh, prior approved west elevation. And then the next slide is the proposed west elevation with the planned modifications. And then the next slide is the prior approved, uh, south elevation. Compared to the proposed modifications here at the south elevation. And the next slide is the prior approved east elevation. And then the proposed modifications. So very, very similar in style. And then this is just to compare, uh, there's, the next two slides are just comparing the shifting in square footages, taking over more interior space in the existing building and reducing the size of the additions. And then showing the resulting outdoor seating area between the two. We're increasing the, uh, interior of the existing, the interior renovations of the existing building by about 300 square feet, reducing the addition by about 300 square feet. And the outdoor seating area, I believe, is increasing by about 300 square feet. Uh, so the petitioner has addressed the relevant criteria for the variation as outlined in your packets. You're having to answer any specific questions related to the special use permit criteria as you see fit. There are two points that, that the petitioner would like to clarify. Number one, regarding the special use permit that was approved by the Lake Bluff Village Board of Trustees at its April 13th, 2020 meeting. We now wish to follow the standard CBD hours of operation for restaurants, both indoor and outdoor seating will apply. And we are no longer seeking specific hours other than the standard CBD hours. And number two, regarding the special use permit that was approved by the village board on April 13th, 2020, we are now seeking to not be required to provide for the design and construction of three additional parking stalls that were to be located in the Village of Lake Bluff property. So with that, we hope that the board has a clear understanding of the intent for this project and the proposed modifications. We are excited about the positive impact this project will have on the Hallowtown District and the residents of the community. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration.
Thank you. Who would like to start?
I have two questions. Can you refresh my memory, maybe our memory, as to where the three parking spaces were going to go? And then also, also, um, what are, what are the easement rights down the alley to the west? What are your easement rights? Because that is all, um, it's not a public alley per se, it's a private lot with a pedestrian alley. Don't get this, Derek, don't get this.
Sorry?
Just put yourself around so you stay.
Oh, this way, okay, great. So our property line on our building comes straight through here down the alleyway, right? Um, the easement actually is on Center Avenue property, goes through this drive-through lane. And then our easement starts, I believe it's 10 feet wide from here to here, continuing down this driveway all the way to the end. And that is for, uh, you know, storm drainage or some drains in there, uh, gas, electric, phone, cable, you know, whatever. It, it can't be built on, um, and we got your letter saying, you know, unless we come back at some point and say special use permit for seating, there's no dining on that area either. So that is not part of this, it just remains a walkway.
I was asking about the north-south alley, what are your easement rights? I don't remember any longer.
Through this area?
Yes.
Yeah, um, that property is owned by Center Avenue Partners, but, um, and Claire or Drew can help me with this, but it has to remain a, uh, public access walkway.
Okay.
And I think they came back at one point to try to get something different, but that still has to remain a walkway. So you have access to the pub property down the easement here, through the, you know, back here, past Village Hall, this way and this way. So it's really a whole crossroads in the back. And I answered your other part, the three spaces were going to be where this tree is here. here. And I think they were an angled, three-angle spaces, which now we get a lot of trucks that come in this area too. But that's where the three spaces were going to be. So the narrow, this entry area for garbage pickup and other deliveries and the tree will then go away. Just as an aside, this says no parking right here. This area too is an easement that nothing can be done on and that gives the community church access through the easement to enter their property, even though there is a wall there. So it just has to remain unusable for the light. So we have it marked as such.
Thank you.
Uh, member Russell? This is Drew, if you can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you.
I can read to you the exact wording of the pedestrian walkway you'd like.
Yes.
The pedestrian walkway shall be located on the subject property between the building located at 103 to 113 East Strand and the building located at 37 to 43 East Strand. Owner and the owners of Center Avenue Partners shall permit the pedestrian walkway to be used as a pedestrian thoroughfare for ingress and egress on a non-exclusive basis. Owner may permit the use of the pedestrian walkway for the walkway restaurant, but for such small-scale retail operations conducted along the walkway, as the village administrator may authorize with advance written approval, provided that neither the walkway restaurant nor any such retail operations shall permit pedestrian ingress or egress. Except for the seating area for the walkway restaurant, no obstructions shall be permitted on the pedestrian walkway unless approved in advance by the village administrator.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Here is the replant for the former driveway for the drive-through. Is that going to be resurfaced in any way or protected by some sort of, I know it's not, is it drivable today from?
It is drivable. Yes, I know when, when sometimes in the drive-through, the cat day folks will park in that drive-through because it's not used and they just sit there all day till they're done at work, then they all leave at the same time. Sometimes it will pull forward and drive out to the rear end or, you know. So yeah, it is drivable now. There's nothing blocking it now.
Is that, is that going to remain in your project? Remain, it won't be drivable through the drive-through anymore, right?
That's correct.
But, so what will happen to either end of the driveway?
In the plan, did we talk about doing a bump out there? I mean, we could do a bump out.
Well, I think technically it's drivable, but I, I don't, I can't imagine anybody would drive through it.
Yeah, I don't know if a fire truck, you should, you would go above that.
I just think, you know, if it's, if the drive-through itself is no longer able to be driven through, that seems like space that could be otherwise used to, of better use, right?
Yeah, I think the intention is great to be more of a walking access, like a pedestrian access, not with vehicles.
Yeah. Total pedestrians, we're kind of, you know, right where the fire asphalt again, but you know, there's a speed bump soon, we'll get rid of that and whatever.
Are you expanding it to the building, to the, what? I mean, to the north? The designer building?
Yeah, so what's got it shown is this area here is the old drive-through, okay? That first 10 feet here is the easement. We would build it roughly, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Scott, about half of this would be interior now. And our remaining half up to here would be some outdoor seating and the entrance right in here, and then this would remain the easement. From this small area in here would be the interior pub. This would be the kitchen, which is currently the garage. And then we move into Lawrence Interiors, a back apartment room that we have partially to put two restrooms in here.
Okay. So total, how much are we increasing the space? 300 square feet?
I think it's, yeah, both of those slides that have the square footage has about what the total square footage was for the entire project. Yeah, it's about 300. 300 says 2106.
That's the prior, the prior.
This is the prior, yeah. And then here is the, the only.
The next slide.
The only difficulty with this is that it also, the total square footage, I believe, includes the outdoor dining area as well.
It does, yeah. 2187.
And the existing indoor area, right? So the only new indoor square footage is the 365.
The new addition under the roof is, under the drive-through is 365 square feet. That's, that would be added.
And of course, you've got the real kitchen too, which is outside, and now that's, now outdoor dining, move the restrooms.
Are my seats are going to be indoors? Would you say?
Combined, it's 70, right?
Combined, yeah, everything is 70, I think. I can't remember what the, what's the, like 16 and 14 are inside? I think it was like 30 or 35 inside.
Can you go back to the floor plan? I chose, I don't know if it has the count.
Yeah, I sent an email to you or Drew, I can't remember off the top.
I sent, next, I was speaking. Okay, so just from my understanding, the, this part's going to be part of the drive-through. They're just going to build out the inside.
Correct.
That'll be covered.
Yeah, current drive-through is all of this area.
It's been a long-term project for you guys.
It sure has. And love, in a way, the weight isn't a bad idea. What we really feel, what we like about this and the restaurant consultants is the fact that you get some more outdoor dining in this. It's not on-street outdoor dining, it's tucked in the back and, you know, other than dining, you don't have any plans to, you know, do anything else but dine out there, dine and enjoy it, you know? So, you know, music, country thing like that, that's going to be really dining. You know, if we can extend out some eaters into a, you know, fall season a little bit, but really, you know, in the winter time, it'll be just that interior portion. And I think a lot of things get much quieter in Lake Bluff and Lake Forest during that winter time. It seems to make more sense.
And for any residential facilities that you have on the second floor, Ms. Lawrence, all the windows face north, is that correct?
For the apartments, they face both north and to the south for windows. The far west apartment also has five windows over the alley.
Which is well.
Yeah. Yeah, which covers a living room, dining room, and then there's a cutout on the side of the building, which is a second dining window, butler pantry, kitchen, and then one back porch area.
Hello, Ms. Sworson?
All right, did you ask me to speak?
Yes, if you're interested.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm cooking with the A B stuff. I'm just, to be, to be fair, I'm following along and gauging it without being in person, so I don't. The only question I have right now really has to do with the alleyway and I guess just safety, I wouldn't want anybody driving through there if, I know that there are trucks often parked there right now. I just wonder how we're going to, how that's being addressed? Because more of a, a more used pedestrian walkway.
I think that somewhere in the plans, I have to find it, at the end that's closest to the library, instead of having an open end, and the reason there are trucks or cars parked there now is that they are Bluffington employees. So that would be done. But I think Scott had originally drawn in the original plan, and maybe it was on the black plan, like a small bump out, so a car could not enter that. And it would be, you know, wide enough for ADA access, three or four feet wide, so we'd make that eight-foot entry down to four feet or something, put plantings in there or something like that, you know? So yeah, it would be obvious that it's not a drive-through. And I mean, something would have to be done, I guess, at the other end where the Duke, you know, the Center Avenue Partners would be at that end as well, you know? And we can do that, but, I mean, part of that would have to be building over a little bit of that easement with some sort of gate chain or something.
Yeah, or you could do new piers, you know, vertical piers that prevent.
Yes.
Okay, would probably have to be removable.
Remove, yeah.
It also looks like in the first special use that was granted in ordinance 2020-4, there was a condition for closure of the former drive-through facility and public pedestrian access, which says that you guys will close, close the entry and exit of the area designated as the former drive-through to all through vehicle traffic and install curbing on Oak Avenue on the east end of the former drive-through pursuant to the specifications of the village. So it, it sounds like it has been accounted for.
Yeah, I think we're dealing with, are there utilities there that would need to periodically be accessed? And that's the only thing we consider, you know?
Only if something breaks, like angles, buried utility lines.
To your point now, that the sanctions are removable.
Yeah. But for everyday traffic, yeah, I think it would be preferable to block, you know, block off some, yeah.
Any other comments from the commissioners, Ms. Fisher? Nothing from the community via the.
I'll just confirm, but I do not believe so. No.
Hearing none, is there, well, Ms. Russell?
Since you did offer it in your written material, I, I would like to, our board to recommend to the village board that you landbank those three spaces so that if the village decides that three more spaces would be needed, they would have the ability to automatically require you to put them in.
To come back and add.
You know, it's, it's three more spaces we're losing in the downtown area, well, we're not losing any now because you're, you're putting them where there's a tree island and it's part, actually partly over the, you were going to block off the driveway with the parking spaces. And if the driveway is going to be parked, blocked now with ballers or planters or whatever, then the Bluffington employees that use the alley for parking, because that's essentially where the alley has been used for the last, since the bank left as a parking lot. I'd say typically there's four, four, five cars in there, they load from each end.
Yeah.
And, I mean, potentially then we could be losing, you know, quite a few available spots at the east end of our downtown.
I would say that they are.
They're few and far between now.
Yeah, I would, I would say two things. One is Bluffington understands that their employees are supposed to be parking after this happens and they lose that drive-through over at the train station. And the second thing is that, and maybe Drew can help me with this, I believe that with the restriping on the center, that they added two spaces over on center, and tree aside, you know, that the trees are, that would go away too, I understand what you're saying. But I thought there was some new parking thing that took place with the addition of Prairie and Half and Half Pizza coming in, where they were not required to add parking. So that's the other reason that we asked to not have it, so, yeah.
The village, Claire, the village picked up a parking space in the block along East Center between East Strand and Center, basically in front of a called Twigs area. Then when we, we did restribe the area in front of the Lake Bluff Library on the south side, just we picked up an extra stall there as well.
And was there something, Drew, it's Gary, was there something passed about parking that dealt with, you know, the addition of these other restaurants that came in, the Prairie and Half and Half? Not sure what that was specifically and what it was talking about, for Claire, do you know?
Yeah, there was an ordinance that was passed, I believe in 2022, that basically said any new uses, restaurants and the CBD wouldn't have to add additional parking, kind of recognizing that the area kind of is as it is. And that was passed after your special use permit initially, it was granted in 2020, so, yeah.
Obviously, we prefer not to have to add those or down the road either.
Yeah, the third space to the north would be difficult because I've watched the trucks come in and out of there all the time when they're delivering furniture to your shop. They can barely get in and out now. And I'd forgotten about that, the new ordinance requirement. So I withdraw my landbanking comment.
Thanks.
Any further discussion among the commissioners or any further questions from Mr. Lawrence?
So there's no more epidemics or pandemics, what do you plan on doing?
Or you want to be an investor, I'm sorry? We plan to do it sooner than later now that we have this final thing set and we do have a number of investors that have agreed to come onboard us. We're not at a final point yet, so if anybody hears of any, let me know.
Be sooner than three years then.
Oh, yeah.
I'll invest, I can eat dickers.
Yeah, it would be wonderful.
Anything else, members of commissioners? Are we in a position for a?
I'm like, I'm showing, I don't, as is, the proposal by Lawrence, Gary Lawrence, for a top restaurant with changing and seating and the outdoor seating as proposed.
Thank you, member Miller.
That's a recommendation, boys.
I think so. Is there a second? Any further discussion? Here is the call.
Member Miller?
Hi.
Member Russell?
Hi.
Member Sworson?
Hi.
Member Toll?
Hi.
Member Danley?
Hi.
Member Fisher?
Hi.
And member, or sorry, Chair Peters?
Hi. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Good luck.
Thanks.
All right, agenda number seven, is that reported?
Yeah, just one update. Next month, we will have a presentation by Opticoast and that's just going to be a, basically an explanation of missing middle housing and just going through some of the background information on what missing middle is and kind of what they'll do with the plan that is being done in coordination with the comp plan. So that's something to look forward to, that's currently scheduled for our next meeting. Assuming we don't have major public hearing items, it would just be at 7:00 PM, like our typical, at our typical meeting time.
They're getting on the agenda currently?
No, but they have until the end of this week to submit.
Said the last time.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Have we heard back from hockey?
We have not, we have, we do not have an update on that one, unfortunately.
All right, thank you, Ms. Cable. Commissioner, report. Any further questions or comments?
Just a, do we, I know it's been over a year where the Half and Half Pizza Company, that space, they get approval to widen that narrow spot in the alley at the south end. Is there any movement from them on actually implementing that plan? Have we heard anything? Maybe you don't, I mean, it all happened before your time.
Yeah, that one I'm not sure of. Drew, did you hear that question?
I couldn't hear, would you please repeat it?
The Center Avenue Half and Half Pizza project to widen the Brick Alley at the south end. They had received approval for that last year. They came in with a site plan. They had received approval for that last year. They came in with a site plan.
My understanding is the, there was a permit submitted but never picked up.
Thanks.
Any other comments or questions for the commissioners? Hearing none. Agenda is overruled. German, is there a motion? Second?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you very much. You have a lot to say.